Ready? We'll call the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's May 12th, 2022, 5:30 PM. They're meeting face to face for the first time in a couple of years at the City of Bisbee Council Chamber. Do roll call, Mike Avlin is not present. John Vallas?
Here.
David Cobb?
Here.
Douglas Dunn?
Here.
Sandra Boosman?
Here.
Nancy Perona?
Here.
Michael Smithser?
Here.
A councilperson is not here, but we do have our Public Works Director.
The councilperson said he couldn't make the meeting.
Okay. And we have Judy Anderson, who is, we came on, she and I served on Planning and Zoning Commission way back prehistoric times, and is on the planning staff of Cochise County, and extremely pleased that you've been willing to join with Doug here and reviewing the studies that have been done and making presentation to us here this evening. And we have with us Doug Taylor, who is our staff staff liaison. So I'll start off with Doug, do you want to kind of kick this off?
Okay, thank you. I think you've probably all, I think you've probably all read the summary of the various, Judy did a summary of the various proposals. I never can really actually figure out if there were two or three, but they're summarized in a two-page letter that she put together that Joe Ward and I were in on the review of, and Judy, do you want to speak to that first, and then I can talk about the second iteration that we kind of put together? Oh, you don't have a mic? Thank you.
Make sure it's on.
Yeah, it is. I'm breathing.
He's good.
Well, I think basically, to be honest, what it kind of boils down to is there are some low-hanging fruits, Doug called them, that are things that could be done in the near future, and then there's a whole, a bunch of proposals that are quite expensive, require first purchasing property from Phelps Dodge generally around the, well, behind the, and then the, let's see, I'm trying to think of the other two places, but places that would require both a lot of money to purchase and would also require probably a shuttle, because they aren't really close enough to actually access Old Bisbee. I mean, my feeling is if you had, if you purchased some of those and had a shuttle that connected the parking lot by the pit, and then the parking lots by Lowell and so on, you could also probably incorporate some of the historic sites in Warren, such as the ballpark, and the architecture in Warren that is pretty significant, and if you worked with Phelps Dodge, you could connect the candle shaft that we have opened up for visitors. But, and generally, it's how much money you want to spend if you want to buy the lot behind Lowell, and it seems like there are two others that are not coming around.
The Den's mine? The Den's mine?
Well, the Den Mine, yes, with the, and the fact that the settling tanks are there, some of them suggest that you would get rid of the settling tanks, others, which I think are historic part of Bisbee, and I didn't want to see that happen personally, but you could also put parking there around the settling tanks, and so, but any one of those are going to require some kind of a consistent shuttle service that caters to tourists as much as it does for locals, and it's going to cost quite a bit of money to purchase. The one you could purchase in Old Bisbee, I don't know how much they want for it, but of course, is the one that's always talked about, which is the parking lot right next to the convention center and public reading publishing, and redesign that. There were some proposals for actually putting a parking garage there, but that would be very expensive, and I can't imagine what the city--
Parking garage will not work there in that lot.
Okay.
That lot is full of subways or the old tunnels.
Ah, so they're closing, okay.
Collier Craft looked at that years ago to build a hotel there, and they abandoned that because it's only good for a parking spot. The question I would have, and I don't think anybody in this group knows, what did the pages pay for that parking lot? I heard it was a song.
I heard it was a dollar, but I don't know if that's true or not. No, yeah, it was something ridiculous.
Yeah, they paid for it ridiculous, and I don't know if the pages would sell it back to what they paid for it.
No, I'm pretty sure it's not on the market for that.
And--
Because when I was on the commission, and you were on the commission too, Doug, when Scott, and I don't remember his last name, was trying--
Reese, Scott Reese, yes.
Scott Reese, was again trying to build a hotel there, but the issue was parking. And he had all kinds of proposals, like he would park over at by Lowell School, or he would park, he would shuttle people from by the pit, and a number of proposals that the commission didn't really think were workable.
And they also looked at Lavender Pit, that was one of the other ones--
Yes. Is that on by Phelps Dodge?
I believe it is.
Okay.
Freeport.
Oh, excuse me, Freeport's where I'm dating myself.
Right, right, thank you, yeah, that's, yes, thank you for that.
Freeport. So I would say basically that, I mean, the suggestions that were summarized in Doug's memo, the ones that seem to make, well, the one that makes the most sense is to restripe spaces to a smaller size, and you'd get 40 additional spaces, and you could restart the Lowell parking lot, but that's not really viable in Old Bisbee unless people, unless they do something to the road eventually and make it more walkable, but it really isn't now, so I think that's all I have to say.
Okay.
I don't know if there's--
And I wanted to add, piggyback something that I did, I think it was last week. I spoke to the council and mayor about the idea of a shuttle bus. Now, I did find one for what I thought was a pretty good price, $27,000, but it sold before I could present it, so I withdrew the proposal. But I was, it was my understanding that, and the reason, it was a short bus kind of thing, the reason that it was, well, not the reason, but that it was, there was a lot of dissension about purchasing a shuttle bus of that, and of that size, I kept it that size so that the driver wouldn't have to have a CDL. If you have less than 16 passengers, you can take from a greater pool of people who can drive. That didn't go before council, but it is an idea that was out there. It was supported by council and mayor to an extent. Now, I don't think they thought it would be $27,000, but that was the least expensive, most-together bus I could find. It was an open-air kind of jitney, kind of like a safari bus. That may have been a turnoff, I don't know. I think they were thinking it might be something in the shape of an old trolley, which is what I had intended, but those are very expensive, so that was an attempt to have a shuttle that maybe filled a portion of the ideas, because I do think overflow parking is a great idea. If you don't mind me running through, I have actually have a new opinion. I thought that what we put together before that was presented to you was pretty viable, because it was really based on a sticker plan, and stickers are very inexpensive item, and I thought that that might be something that would work. We were looking for, you know, the other ones were so complex, and they did have, you know, building things and buying things and paving things in them, but I think those complexities rendered it infeasible. What we were trying to do in this proposal that you have before you, the second one, not the letter from Judy, that's a summary, but in the actual proposal, was to find goals, and I call them the low-hanging fruit, I think, but was achievable goals, and I think that met that to a certain extent, but in the interim, I did an informal survey, this is anecdotal, but I do think it had some, I interviewed about 20 people about parking. It's a bigger issue than I thought, a very contentious issue here in town, not just in Old Bisbee, but for the rest of the town, why does Old Bisbee get all this attention? So I conducted this really informal, 20-person, it was a little, a little less than that, and it seemed to reflect, there were three scales, let's say. There was a full-blown program, like one of the proposals you have from, you know, like 10 years ago, and that may have had 10%, probably less support. There was the low-hanging fruit idea, which I talked about, none of these were written or anything, I just talked about it, but I talked about the one that we brought before you. I think that had about 20% popularity.
Mike, and then, did you get support for the striping of--
A little, a little bit, but people, so the 70% of the people said, leave it as is, they didn't want anything done, they don't want to spend money, they don't want to have rules and regulations. I do think Mr. Dunn contacted me last week and had a, an inquiry about, and that's what this map is here, about these two spaces along Highway 80 and the Walsh Avenue parking lot on Brewery Gulch. Logan was kind enough to do all the legwork for it, and I'm going to summarize it, you can join in, but I'm going to summarize that the Walsh parking lots, a public parking lot, it's just not paved, is that my understanding?
Correct.
Okay, so that is a parking lot, that could be, that nobody seems to use but local folks, that's great, if we, but if we had need for an overflow, maybe that would be a good one.
Where's Walsh parking lot?
Up, John, can you describe it better? It's just past you.
Uh, Matt knows where it is.
So going down Brewery Gulch?
Okay.
Walsh Avenue.
The school buses parked.
Yes. The only part of that parking lot that's not ours is that single parking lot in the front corner.
Yes.
That's on the level of the road. That's the only part that's not city property.
Okay.
For some reason.
So that is an alternative.
But it's all the way up past City Park?
Yeah.
Yes, past City Park.
Yeah, a bit past City Park, but there are several that are sort of in that realm of a walk, but they could park, it's not like we don't have any parking spots. In the summary that we, or in the proposal that we did, we talked about the, let's see, what parking, well, we talked about the one where the railroad station used to be, the Bisbee, I think the Lyric, and then the Brewery Gulch behind the Lyric. As possible, allowance parking lots for stickered vehicles. There's no real need for a stickered vehicle at this time, but as it looked like, at one point, is that the city was trying to go a direction of signage, limits on parking, and if that were the case, and I think it would be open to any citizen for a sticker, but, you know, if you have a 24-hour parking and you have guests at a hotel, you have workers, you know, the workers probably aren't there, 24-hour residents of the various neighborhoods, because it's what's, one of the great beauties of Bisbee is that it's multi-use almost everywhere, and people live with commercial, that these would be maybe places where some of the people had parking stickers so that they weren't held to the 24-hour or the 48-hour, because actually, the one where the railroad station used to be, I don't know what that's called, I guess Nakka Road parking lot, actually, that is a 24-hour parking lot, so anybody, it, it's very loose, and that is what people want to keep, this is an anecdotal consensus, is people want to keep it so that people can park anywhere. So Doug mentioned, so Walsh Avenue, that seems like a great parking lot. Doug mentioned the two spots on your map here, this aerial photograph, that are dashed in yellow as potential new development of parking, which actually Andrew Law has brought up at the last meeting. I don't know how many we could get in there, and that would be for an engineer to determine, but there is quite a bit of that land that is pretty flat and on grade with the entrance ramp and the exit ramp off of 80. So, because of Mr. Dunn's and my investigation, and through Logan, and Logan has spoken with, what's his name?
Martinez.
At DOT, and he's looking at that, and it seemed like he was looking at it from a serious--
He's submitting it for permission, more or less, to get approval for us.
Yeah, so it, it's, we don't have to take advantage of that, but your idea of using this, and Mr. Law's idea of it, I think is a pretty good idea. My new opinion, and I don't mean to negate anything in this proposal that we gave you, but is that adding new parking, such as this, and maybe looking for other areas without changing rules and regulations, and just keeping it the way people like it, which is the Old Bisbee style of, if you find a parking spot, you can have that parking spot, you know, it doesn't have to be contentious. I think that those two areas, Walsh Avenue and maybe some more that we didn't look at, and I know that's a bit of a cost, and I have no idea, you guys might have some idea.
Years ago, when I was in the Streets Department, which, I can't remember when it was, it was, we had gone in there and cleaned up that, the north property, north of the highway, and did all kinds of measurements to put parallel parking in that island, and that was without taking all the vegetation out, just on the lower part. With taking all the vegetation out, you could definitely add quite a bit of parking in there, but without taking a lot of vegetation and keeping it just kind of next to the road, adding like a, turning away into it and having parking on both sides of that curb that runs along the road, it was adding, I think, like five to six parking spots, maybe even more.
Yeah, and that, that would have to be designed, I think.
Yeah.
Because I do think that this is a wonderful spot. I know that there are ramps in and out, but Bisbee is the kind of place where maybe head-in parking, you know, I know we hate that in that kind of situation, but we have speed bumps in there, I believe, maybe, maybe not.
No.
But we don't, okay. So I do think that somebody could come up with, and maybe you go behind a curb and head-in park, and then, you know, sort of like a service road, I don't know, but we'd have to get that designed.
It came very close to us, tearing a lot of different stuff up next to the road and doing it, but I can't remember at the time why we didn't or whatnot, but it came very close to it.
I can only imagine that the tourism numbers have grown since then, and I think that's what people are talking about. That's the other thing, we're really talking a Thursday through Sunday morning problem, you know, on Tuesday afternoon in October, you know, anyone could park anywhere, but, you know, maybe on a Saturday afternoon in April, you can't find anywhere to park, but that's, that's life, you know? I, full disclosure, I live in that neighborhood, and it's life, you know, you find what you can find, you, you know, I do know that during Pride, some other events that are very popular, people park almost down to the Lavender Pit along 80.
Yeah.
It's a long walk, but it doesn't seem to bother them, yes?
Yeah, so I have a question. When we talk about parking, we never talk about, never, since I've lived here, and I think we've never talked about the issue of disability parking.
That's important. There is disability parking designated, correct?
Five, five spots.
Yeah, it's not much, it's not much.
Five.
Yeah, so that is another issue, and maybe if, if we restriped and put in, I think it should be, you know, it should at least be 10%.
So is there, is there a, well, not that anyone would know, but is there, you know, if there's 100 spots, do X amount go to disability?
Yes.
There is.
Yeah, by the ADA, it's required.
Yes, there's a certain amount, I can see if I can figure that out while we're talking here.
Because one of the parking spots, in full disclosure, I have a brother with cerebral palsy that I am the primary caregiver to, and one of the parking spots is up by the Oliver House. So if the other four spots are filled down by the bank, there is still no way for my brother to walk, or any person with a disability to walk from the Oliver House downtown.
Well, that is something we, now, by handicap, maybe you said disability, I'm sorry, but if you designate a parking space for someone with the, you know, the hanger off the, you know, that has the allowance for that--
The placard, right.
It should be spread out more than just four of them at the bank and one up at Oliver House.
I think there's five in town.
Yeah, so there--
I don't think that what I call the Bisbee B law has any, does it?
I don't think so.
Yes, it does.
I think the Bisbee, the Bisbee may be causing you to have a disability if you drive through.
Yes, no, I agree. I think that's, I'll go to one behind Scott.
And we have to figure out too, and that's something that we can, you know, look into, what gives, if, how many we need, how many parking spaces to, you have this many parking spaces, ADA says you have this, you need this many, that's per parking lot.
What about city?
So it's not like citywide.
Right. And for example, the only ticket that I've received in the last 20 years of my life was actually a parking ticket, because I could not find a parking spot, so I parked down by the Lyric illegally, and because if I don't have my brother physically with me, I'm not allowed to have the placard.
Oh, really?
And, you know, and so, you know, basically, I had to go back to the car, get my brother, receive the ticket, and because he wasn't with me, I got the ticket, and then I had to go pick him up. So disability just should be part of this conversation--
You're right.
Because you also can get people to serve on the accessibility board, or whatever the board is, there's, you don't have anyone to serve on that board.
No, there's no one on that board.
Correct, and it hasn't been for like, like four or five years.
And it has been said that if you live long enough, it's the only minority that everyone's going to eventually face.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that should be a primary part of any, any engineering or any designations we have.
Yeah, and they had talked about joining that committee with this committee, because they kind of deal with the same stuff, so really, they should be in the same committee.
Right.
It all deals with the same things, pretty much, that you guys deal with, so, I mean, I think, having another committee, I think you guys could deal with that right here.
So I do think it's worth looking at this, I don't know what we're talking about in numbers, but it strikes me that nobody wants to, number one, pay the price that I've heard that the large parking lot next to the convention center is possibly going for at any time. It was for sale before, I think it was at $695. There's a parking lot behind the convention center that's dedicated by ownership to the convention center.
I don't think it gets used that big, though, no.
No, I think, you're right, there's a lot, and they've been very generous to allow people to park whenever, I think it gets used for a lot more than the convention center. It is, you know, parking is an issue, and it's been very contentious, it's, when I spoke to people, there was slight anger on both sides. I could see if, and we, I didn't hear anything about accessible parking lot, parking spots, but I would think of there'd be several people that, in the population, that would get very angry, that they'd be sort of, you know, redlined into an odd little spot by the bank if you didn't have to go to the bank, but you wanted to go up to, you know, I don't know what, what's up there, you know, one of the furniture store, or, you know, or your store, that would, yeah, that would be a hard thing to do.
You know, I, the change is just inevitable, it just is what it is, but the other thing that's happening with disability is the people that have those placards, whether it be a placard or a license plate, if they have that, and there's so, there's so many limited, like I parked at the one, people don't think that they own them, because they have that, they've been parking there for years, so the part of the change is, look, we have grown in ways that we can't, you know, imagine that we would be growing, but just because whether you, with or without a handicap placard, and you've been parking in the same spot for 900 years, that doesn't mean that that's your parking spot.
Right, so it's a driveway or something, yeah.
Right, so I had actually a disabled citizen yell at me because I walked out of my vehicle, because she didn't see that I was going to the other side of the vehicle to get my brother, so part of this whole parking situation where the people that you interviewed that don't want things to change, we don't, no one wants things to change, but inevitably, we are outgrowing either the systems that we have in place loosely, or the systems that we have not put into place, but change is inevitable, and, you know, that's why we're having this hard session, to answer some really hard questions about the changes that--
Yeah. So just, oh, just answer, just, I counted the parking spaces on the Bisbee B parking, now, all the extra ones that people kind of add in, but just, that's lined, is about 32, I think, roughly around that, so that equals to two handicap accessible parking spaces, so technically, we shouldn't be having two in there instead of one.
What are the chances that we could go ahead and actually just do the re-striping from 22 to 17, 18 feet, and in the process of doing that, one of the, one of the, yeah, one of the recommendations, theoretically, you can get 40 more spaces.
That was one of the--
Hold on, hold.
Oh, well, up Main Street.
Oh, it's on the very--
On Main, Nakka Road, they're just tightening them up, just one of their--
I don't know specifically of spaces, but--
With that, the minimum with, parking width is by the MUTCD is nine feet, and that's what we put them at.
No, she means lengthwise.
Oh, length?
Yeah, I don't know why that would make a difference, but-- Why would that make a difference, 22, if you just made it shorter, could you put, essentially you get 40 more--
Right, it could still be nine feet wide.
Yeah.
It'd be parallel parking, so it doesn't--
Parallel parking is different, I'm sorry, I stuck in my--
Oh, okay, okay.
And this was from one of--
If you're gonna pick up a truck, they're still not gonna be getting them.
So, I have two questions, the re-striping, what lot are we talking about with the re-striping? Not the parallel parking on Main Street?
We're just, the only thing we were talking about with re-striping was parallel parking.
Okay, so everywhere--
Oh, okay, so we are talking Main Street.
Uh, Main Street, Nakka Road--
So why wasn't it re-striped after it was paved?
Well, it was, maybe you have some information, because there was a reconfigure of parking after the paving.
Yes. After we parked, we did an edge of road marker, they didn't put the actual indications of the links, and why? That's what the Public Works Director--
So why is it an issue? It should just be done. And as well as the loading zone across, or in front of the Bisbee B parking lot--
There is no loading zone.
Because without that being a loading zone, trucks are parking all up and down Main Street, blocking traffic, well, inhibiting traffic.
I mean, they, they do anyways, they park wherever they want, even with that there.
Yeah, but if they have loading zones to park in, then they're gonna--
Yeah, that was one that people would park in, I mean, I mean, we drive-- Yeah, that was one that people would park in, I mean, I mean, we drive the roads, or when I, I used to be in streets, drive the roads all the time, and then even if it said, um, it was for a loading zone, people would park there anyways. So we took it out so anybody can park there.
Yeah, I just was listening to everybody here. Um, I was actually on the Arizona Rangers for a time, which is, is the volunteer police assist group. Uh, the problem we have in this town as far as parking is that the police department doesn't buy into enforcement. They were told years ago by, I think Mayor Smith, you do not get parking tickets out. There is no control of parking in this town. I haven't seen, and to give you an example, I was commenting, uh, the Public Works did a great job restriping Lot B on Wednesday. Uh, I drove past it by the restriping. There were four vehicles parked in that lot when they were trying to restripe it, with two police cars up there. After they had gone ahead and put signs out for three days ahead of time that were restripping the parking lot, you can't be here Wednesday morning. And then today I went past there twice, and you guys did these, I call them gore points, little places where you can't park, where it's striped off in the corner so you can make the terms. And twice today, there were people parked in those areas. So before we really do anything going forward, which will be the next comment, is we've got to get City Council to get on Chave, or whoever Chave's replacement's gonna be, and enforce this. Possibly even getting a meter maid.
See, that's where I think we've, and this, this is purely my understanding from speaking to people, but when we talk about hiring a meter maid or parking meters, which we have in the, these proposals, that's why they don't get off the ground. And I, I'm really hoping there's a grassroots bottom that we can start at. We do have to consider people with disabilities. That is, I mean, it's by law and it's by community. Should, a community has every kind of person, we should be looking at that. But I don't know, and I'm not advocating not doing that, I'm just saying, I don't think that there's a, um, an idea that that should be. I think people are happy with no tickets. Is my anecdotal.
You know, until they're, they can't get through, or until they're stuck on Main Street for a while. Uh, my other comment was to Public Works, you guys did a great job on Lot B. Let's do the whole city. I don't know if you have it in your budget. Well, let's go ahead on Main Street where it's a red zone, paint the curb red. Get those prison, prisoners that you guys are using over at the, at the mine tour. Give them a paintbrush and have them paint curves. And go ahead and push the hash marks in for the lots. Seventeen-foot stalls, I own a full-size pickup truck, I can't get into that.
And there's a lot of them.
But if you had twenty-two-foot stalls that were demarcated, then you wouldn't get a person parking with ten feet in front of them and ten feet behind them, and actually taking up two and a half spots. Because they would have designated segments. So I think just designating the stalls out would increase-
That's good.
-the availability.
I think that's correct.
Yeah, just like everything else, there's a variety, you know, and there's a diversity of parking spaces and needs.
I suggest that you go ahead and do, uh, the Gold's parking lot next. I mean, like I said, you guys did a great job on B, let's do the Gold's parking lot, take a look at it.
Well, they won't be doing much striping right now. They're starting their paving project, so they'll be doing almost all, nothing but that for a while. But we will be getting to that.
But you can, you can use trustees too, or you can use one person supervising. Where you're doing curves and stuff.
Yeah, we have a strapping machine and everything that can do it, but-
Do you need, uh, do you need council's approval before you, so you, okay, so this is something that, this is good, this could be done.
Yes, this is part of what we do anyway.
Yeah.
Well, we want to definitely do the Golds especially, because their garbage truck drivers have something to get in there.
Yeah, the, the Golds is gonna get revamped a little bit. Not revamped, we're ta, we have to take out.
I'm on the Golds, and I, and I know between me and a couple other people, we'll have three cars parked up there and we'll take six bucks. Just because they're not demarcated out. And, and I know it hasn't been striped in over five years.
True.
Probably fifteen.
No, that's not true.
Okay, you did what, ten?
Oh, I've done it, we've done it a couple times. I've been here eleven years.
Okay. Oh, yeah, that, that I think would help everybody out. Um, just information. The last thing about what you were getting with the, with the people, there are a lot of people who believe because they've been parking there for nine years on city property, it's their spot. I'll give you an example. I live up on Quality Hill. And there's a big, there's a big parking lot up there, we call it the landing. And there's people out there, virtually every single spot up there is marked, no parking. Private residents have been parking there for five, six, seven, twenty years, and they deem that their property. They put up the no parking sign. My suggestion is that we come up with something with P and Z. You can't put a no parking zone in a public parking area.
We do have that. Joe Ward removes them every chance he gets. Uh, I know he's on, he doesn't have many chances, but he, he's doing a lot of things. But I know that that is, uh, not le, you know, I don't know if it's legal, but it, it is, they're, they're subject to being taken down. I think they might even be in the zoning code.
They're not, they're not law.
Right.
It's not the law when it's-
No, it's not the law, but it's, it-
And I'll give you my last example. If you go up, if you go up Tombstone halfway between the Royale and Castle Rock Inn, there is a lady there that has a garage parked up to the street. It's not a garage because they don't use it to park cars. They've got the no parking signs out, and it basically means, this is my private parking spot, even though it's public land. And when they leave, they go ahead and put cones out, so nobody else parks there.
Yeah, that's, uh, those are issues.
There's a shop from the Royale too, there's a two-story building that they painted no parking. And I thought it meant something, but then, you know, I thought that it didn't.
As tourists don't know it, they just decide to either ignore it or-
Joe brought to my attention, Joe Ward brought to my attention that, uh, at the Circle K on, uh, whenever that's on Garden, is that-
Garden Ave.
Yeah, Garden Ave, that there's a bunch of garages that are there that all say no parking. There's no legal reason for that. They, you can park in front of those.
So enforce, I guess I completely agree with you. Enforcement is the key.
It probably is, but-
Then we're going up on Commerce Street, that is the same exact thing that happens. Because the merchants believe that because they are tenants or own that building, you know, so it's not-
Or having a sorority.
One person.
Yeah.
And then we, uh, we're still, when Judy was on P and Z, we talked about, um, people that were parking for advertising, that are still doing that. So we're taking an issue that we, as a commission, talked about two years ago, or, I mean, you haven't been gone that long. And so we do something only, only to revisit the same exact thing, because we have people that, you know, are offending this way, or offending that way, or offending that way. And so it's not putting the blame on one person, it's saying that we all need, if, if we're talking about illegal Bisbee, we all need to make accommodations to the inevitable changes that are happening.
And I agree with you that I do think that the extra, uh, personnel of, uh, you know, having someone to either be a meter reader or, uh, zoning enforcement officer, you know, strictly for that, or asking police with, uh, five missing policemen, you know, I think we're down to, I may be wrong, but a ten?
Nine.
Nine, okay, so we're, we're in big trouble, uh, with numbers. Um, so I do get that maybe they triage what's important, and somebody parked over here isn't, but, you know, I don't know.
But why don't we extend the taking down of illegal signs and covering up of no parking areas that are parking to MAPS group?
Well, he's-
They got the streets full.
Oh, taking down signs, I'm, I don't know if, that'd be more Joe's, I think that's his.
Yeah, that is Joe's, but, but I'm thinking maybe Javi.
Yeah.
Yeah, there may be someone there that-
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Maybe a-
Training.
There, there may be someone in that's from DBW.
I don't really know if he knows here, but Joe is gonna be retiring, but a year or-
October.
Who is Joe?
Well, Joe Ward. I don't, we don't know exactly.
Let's not put anything in stone yet.
Well, is, nothing's in stone. I've heard November and I've heard February, so we'll see.
I think he retired last week.
He's training a replacement now, is he not?
He's training somebody, but that person is still, has to qualify and be, go to interviews just as much as anybody else.
But you don't need a certificate to be a zoning enforcement or DRB, which is really, I think, two things we need as, uh, anybody who knows the DRB stuff. It, it falls sometimes through the cracks. Uh, Joe has, I know he has right now several new homes, a lot of new homes being built. A couple in Warren and other places around. Uh, he had, you know, he has to review full plans and it's just him. And it's, I, I don't, I'm not trying to make an excuse, but I know he's flat out. But I do think you're correct, and I'm not against enforcement. As a matter of fact, I thought originally if we had someone who, if we had signs without meters, but if someone was there for too long, it's just good to have someone sort of on the beat there. I don't know how you do that, but it is-
Well, I'll give you an example, where I am guilty. I parked my big construction trailer in front of the Bisbee Brownstone for six months solid before PD finally said, hey, you need to move this. And I'm guilty.
Yeah, but, and I do think that that's sort of the benevolence of a small town. It's kind of like Otis gets the key and locks himself up, and, you know, it, 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 too much policing will have, and I'm not advocating either way, but I just, this thought-
But we're also not, you know, for those of us that have been around, let's just say fifteen-plus years, I remember when people were stealing car keys out of, out of, my car got stolen when I had a two-grand Cherokee. My car got keyed because they thought that I was a tourist. So I'm just saying, this policing, if, just for example, I just, I have a calculator on my phone. A thirty-six-thousand-dollar-a-year salary would mean that we would do, need to do a hundred and twenty tickets a month. Now, that's not without anything else that we're talking about at this table. A hundred and twenty tickets a month would pay for a full-time thirty-six-thousand-dollar-a-year salary.
Well, we have benefits and, you know, and we would, it would have, probably you'd have to go with two forty to, to sort of make a-
So I'm just saying, if we have two forty and Tuesday through, or Thursday through Sunday, we meet our quota on tourist.
It's a part-time position essentially.
Yeah. One thing with that is, and I, you can correct me if you might know, I don't know. The, the money from tickets doesn't come to the city, it goes to the county.
I don't know that, but, yeah, that-
And also, do we want to be the town that is ticketing a hundred and twenty or however many to tourists and to locals?
Well, that is the other thing, is that as much as I hear, and that's another tough discussion, but as much as I hear in opposition, and I hear it all the time, of tourism, it is our generator. It's the, you know, it, there's no way around it. It's what's here, we don't have, you know-
But if we, and I'm just saying, I'm not, I am not advocating enforcement either. I was just sitting here with a calculator that are going, if we're trying to, and I didn't know that about county. But I'm saying, no, we don't want to be the town that does that. But then if we have people that don't want to change things, and people don't want to pay for a parking permit, and they don't want tourism, and they, and that, we're, we're talking ourselves in circles.
It's sort of where I came to this conclusion that-
So if we're, you know, if you don't, if you don't have tourism, if I don't have tourism, I mean, I can tell you how many of my sales last year were actually locals.
Well, the overarching thing is that tourism is our lifeblood, it's our bread and butter. And we need to make, and parking is reaching a critical mass on those big days. And I'm sure that some people are turned off by that, because they drive around, they drive around, they drive around. And I think government can do something for the people that they can't do for themselves, okay? And so sometimes you have to take an unpopular stance. And if we have to put more parking on, uh, Tombstone Canyon, or if we have to sell stickers, those people that think they own those parking spots, okay, fine, we'll sell it to you, twenty bucks a month. And then we can pay our meter maid.
They don't want to do that, don't people? Don't want to pay.
Well, then we'll have to get enforcement, and we'll have to tow it. And I've, I've had my car towed before, uh, but the enforcement is a problem. In that B parking lot you're talking about, there's a big sign that says, uh, twenty-four-hour parking. There are people that park in that B parking lot, the Bisbee B parking lot, they park there for months, months. And I said something to Albert Chev, and he goes, I don't have manpower to do it. But there's a guy that has a camper, and he was parked there for six months without moving it. So if we have enforcement, then we can move that stuff along, we can, uh, take down those illegal signs, we can generate income by selling stickers, we can pay our meter maid.
And you folks are an advisory commission for the City Council. So if you have a directive you want to send that way, you can advise them as to what you want. It doesn't necessarily mean it happens, but you are in that position.
With, oh, yeah, I forgot what I was gonna say, never mind.
Well, I'd like to raise a couple more suggestions. Policing is something, of course, I served on the City Council. And the last time we, the council says, we're gonna start enforcing, gosh, I want to tell you, that was a bombshell. And, uh, so I know that you, it's gotta be a very determined council that implement that. And, uh, and I think it's also true that we're understaffed in, um, in terms of just personnel, during what we just spent retiring on. But I guess a couple other questions. Uh, we made reference to the, the south side of, I mean, the, the north side of, uh, I, or, hey, what about the area in front of the, uh, Mine Tour? Have you ever talked about that?
We have talked about, I think that's a great idea. I've thought, I've had the thought in my mind about that. There's a good amount of space there. Um, we definitely, you know, like Lo was saying, we have to, we're trying, we'll see if we get the approval for that.
Is that on the map?
It's upside down.
Yes.
You have it upside down, but it, it's, yeah, that, it's the one on the south side.
So, um, I definitely think that could be a, a good thing to do, especially if we, because we're also, I mean, we have the Bisbee Bike Way that's trying to go forward, that could be part, I mean, of that project as well, or benefit that project.
How much is it to go into the Mine Tour now?
That, I don't know.
Why do they stand there?
How much does the Mine Tour cost?
Fourteen dollars.
So for fourteen dollars, if, um, if we had, um, a, if you got hold of a sixteen-passenger vehicle that picked up the people that are going to the Mine Tour, you know, like when I went to Alcatraz, I had to pay forty dollars to actually get to Alcatraz. I had to swim to Alcatraz to look at it. So I'm just saying, maybe, um, a suggestion would be to add a nominal fee, whether it's a three or a five-dollar per-person charge, and then we bring them to the Mine Tour, because then that frees up all that parking. You know, because a lot, you see a lot of people walking to the Mine Tour anyway, but a lot of people that don't know, with all those spots, if we drop them off and then take them back for a nominal fee that's included in the ticket price, maybe it goes from fourteen dollars to seventeen dollars, or to twenty dollars.
Yeah.
But it was a private company that took us to Alcatraz. I almost made it, but the sharks were-
Yeah, that's too bad.
They picked you up.
I was gonna comment further, I was now looking at that space in front of the Mine Tour. And of course, you have two-way traffic there, contrast to what the case on the north side was a little easier to-
Correct.
-to deal with there. I mean, I certainly, you know, I've been pushing this for a long, long time in terms of various, you know, Public Works had provided neat drawings over the years when I was on the council in terms of how we could develop that. And there are certainly, you know, a number of ideas in terms of doing that. But anyway, I just was, again, uh, re-driving that, and the area in front of, uh, the Mine Tour is two-way traffic for part of that, uh, which makes crossing it a little more difficult. But anyway, that, in this is, but there is a larger space, you know, there is a significant piece of landing right from downtown.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, uh, we're starting in the right direction with talking with ADA.
Yeah.
And I think also we're gonna be in a situation where the, uh, the sales tax for, for streets is gonna be coming up in November for renewal. Uh, and certainly, I was instrumental in that, and I was the one who inserted streets and infrastructure so it would be available for projects like this, uh, which I think- Which I think are crucial. So I think this is something that, it's a good time to be talking about it.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Another spot, again, is kind of like Walsh Parking Lot, and that is Higgins Hill. There's a very sizable parking spot there. And with proper signage, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's not way out in terms of a parking space. But that certainly is an area that could be developed as well. Also, I'd like to explore with private individuals, the Catholic Church in particular, in terms of putting up a pay station or something like this. And they would set the term for this parking is available here during, during certain days and certain hours. And then you put your, your required parking fee into that pay station and that would be something that would go to pay towards restoration of the windows and other things. But there are a couple of private properties likewise where that might be possible. Central School, and of course, there's a property under Castle Rock, which is privately owned. And I think, I always understood it was an individual that wasn't too happy with the city. And.
He won't sell.
Yeah, and, and so.
Are you saying that we wouldn't try to buy them? We would just try to enter into agreement that allows public parking and they may grow money off of it?
Correct. I mean, you see that in other places where you, where they open up private property for special events. And either there's somebody out there collecting it or often there's just a pay station in which you.
Private parking.
You know, your five dollars for a parking there and, and you get a parking space during those designated hours. And I'm not sure what their, in terms of Catholic Church, what their agreement with the court is right now in terms of dividing parking there. So those are something that would need to be.
Well, there already is pay parking at the convention center on weekends. There's a, there's a gentleman that comes, stands at the, sort of at the gateway. I think it's a, it would be really a great idea because it's also monetizes someone's property without changing the, the face of, of the landscape there, you know, without having to build something or tear something down. I, I think that would be great. You do remember OK Street, the private parking, and that was a, you know, a nightmare up there. And, yeah, and, you know, that parking is a, an amazingly.
Ticklish.
Yes, thank you.
What, Matt, what reaction have you had from ADOT in terms of people who park lots, eighty, during special events?
Haven't heard anything.
Okay, because it seemed like there's never, I've never, ever seen anybody out there ticketing or towing. And certainly whether we want to encourage that or discourage that, I mean, I.
I think it's benign neglect. I think it's sort of what the parking in town is without tickets. It's, as long as nobody gets into a fight, you know, we're okay. I, and I, I sort of support that because I, and I think everyone knows that, I'm hearing this from you, that, you know, that if we change things too much, and I'm not saying keep them the same really. But I do think if we try to make too much enforcement or limit, and I think the proposal that we put together before sort of limited the use of the parking lots to residents. That was residents of the entire city, but that might not even, it didn't fly in my little discussions. I, I do think adding more parking if possible would be a wonderful thing. I do think if the city owned the parking lot next to the convention center, that it could be pay parking all the time. Which would probably generate cash enough to maybe purchase another piece of property. I know some people have really good relationships with the mine and can sort of pull that off. I, maybe that could happen, I don't know. But the, I think this discussion was sort of a, a way of looking at it. I think everyone sort of agrees it shouldn't be these full-blown, complex proposals. That's what I'm hearing. But something needs to be done is the other thing I'm hearing.
Well, I think also just an illustration of if we restrike things differently, how we added spaces. And suddenly that area above Castle Rock, when all of a sudden you look at parallel, parallel parking to angle parking on that one side. Really opened up a number of parking spaces and it's very obvious, it's real obvious that this is a welcoming parking area. So I think that we need to.
And did you, were you the one that said Bisbee is thirty-two vehicles? The, in this, I believe Judy worked out the numbers, that if we restripped from twenty-two to, let's say eighteen, I think we got forty new spaces. That's like having another new parking lot without ever even touching this stuff. I, that almost seems, if it is something you guys can do, it almost seems like a no-brainer.
Well, I can't imagine where those forty spaces are. And I, when I read that, I don't, I would question that. Because basically we're talking about Main Street, right, in terms of restriking Main Street.
And I think they were going all the way up to like High Desert Market, you know, I, and I don't know.
That's all reason to restripe up that part.
Well, well, part of, when we did the angle parking and we added in that crosswalk, you know, last year or the year before, I can't remember. On the, on the, on the side of the crosswalk where the Castle Rock is, we added parking since we did that along. And we, and when we striped the road when we paved, we shifted over that whole road over towards Castle Rock. And that added that, that parking along underneath that house right there with that big tree.
But nobody ever cursed there?
I, I do see some people there, but.
Very, very few. But I think if you, if you designated spots, went out there and striped it out as.
Yeah.
Park, you know, parallel parking spots, you're gonna gain.
And parking spots. With that spot is, because there's red marks on the rock and that's a private wall. So I'm leery on trying to paint over that, but.
Well.
We might, we might just do it or try and pressure wash it off.
I really like the head-in parking that you have a little further up past that lot. You were talking about it next to Castle Rock. The head-in really, you know, gives you a lot of, but I know you have to have certain ingress and egress. But it, it really makes the numbers because you're getting two cars to every length at least, maybe two and a half.
But you can add six more spots as you go up the hill, two that aren't striped out yet.
Uh, there's four. And there, those four spots are gonna be the, the electric charging spots.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Could you, where's the, the electric charging?
Uh, where Clausen Road comes down, right below that, uh, next to the, where that crosswalk is.
Uh-huh. I think it's right by Vogue, isn't it?
Uh, kind of is. It's on Tombstone Canyon. But when we put in, when we, it's hard to explain. We brought, extended the, the stop sign from on Clausen out further. Now we had a better line of sight, so we can add more parking now. Those parking weren't there because you, the line of sight coming from where the stop sign was, you couldn't see up there.
Right.
Now you can see clear to the chocolate factory pretty much. So.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's it.
I mean, it seemed like you certainly, I don't remember your name, but you mentioned that we could do some striping where you had for just compact cars, like you see, and separate those out from truck cars. We could, especially in the Bisbee B.
You can't, you can't do compact parking.
No.
The county has two compact spots that are close to the front door. There are crew cab pickup trucks parked there every single day.
So it doesn't work?
Every single day.
No, it's a, I mean.
I've seen it all the time.
Well, we do have motorcycle parking and there's people parked in that too.
Yeah, so.
Well, it, it sounds like the, the things that probably won't happen is more enforcement. We can remove, I like the striping for more spaces.
Yes.
Either, you know, areas that are not striped, if you can stripe to get more cars in there rather than these.
And I think for safer circulation too, especially the one behind the stock exchange and circulation.
I agree with that.
I, I, I seriously doubt we'll get more enforcement, more tickets given, although I think that would be a really good idea.
I'm sure everybody will just start following the rules eventually.
Yeah.
Um, sorry, go ahead.
Well, if you get enough tickets, you'll start following the rules.
Yeah.
Well, except when.
I, I think that, I think removing the personal no parking signs, even if, you know, we can't designate a single person to do it. But maybe they can be identified and as we can, take care of those.
Yeah, we might be able to have somebody that can do that.
Yeah. I, I think the main way we can, we can add parking, other than restriping, is just working with the lots we have. Working on getting this, as long as we can have an enter and exit safely from those roads.
Traffic engineers can study that.
Yeah, they.
And pedestrians safely, because they're gonna park there and walk into town.
And adding, adding the accessible parking spot. The, you do, you know, I, I think that there is way, just from my past of having done parking lots. There might be a way to do some sort of little barrier island and then parking behind that that keeps you out of the flow of traffic. But you look on what we were just talking about, the head-in parking on Tombstone Canyon. I think the people are going too fast in the, in these lanes anyway off of eighty. They think they're still on eighty, I think. But if people drove like they do on Tombstone Canyon, a car backing out isn't the end of the world. And maybe that's where the speed limit is, is that, I would rather see that enforced than parking, you know, tickets. But there might be, I think leave it to the engineers. You guys have engineers that you can reach out to.
Yeah, we, we can.
If tickets, if tickets go to the county, then what money goes to the city?
I don't know. There must be a proportion of that.
If you get a speeding ticket, where does that money go?
That goes to the county.
County, you know, eh?
They got all the nice toys.
Yeah. Uh, it's something the county, like our city council has talked about. There's something, they were, we're talking with the engineer, sorry, with our attorney on trying to change that. And one thing it has to do is we don't have our own judge.
Right.
So that's a big reason why.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Because we have the, the judge at the county, at the county jail. And so we don't get any of the money.
The money probably helps pay for the management.
Yeah. Um, and just to kind of recap, so I think we got some, well, do the striping on Tombstone Canyon, that'll help. We, we are gonna, the Walsh Parking Lot, we are gonna clean that up when we get time. In between paving, different roads and everything, we will get up there, do parking, clean that up, add some bumper blocks up there. So it's, you know, people can see exactly where you're supposed to park. Higgins Parking Lot up, up behind the pool is, is really, that's a good spot for parking as well. And if we ever get a trolley, that's something, a place where we could even drive up to. And, you know, that could be part of the rounds on that. Because we own, the city owns from the beginning of, I mean, it's hard to, you guys, unless you guys are up there, you don't know where it is. But beginning of that parking lot, the north side of that parking lot, all the way to the highway. So in, in part of that is like a mountain, part of a mountain and a hill. I don't know how much it would cost to demo all that and to make, because you could have almost two-tier parking up there and add at least a hundred parking spaces.
Is there any way, I mean, that's a difficult, it's not a fine, is there any way, logical way to use signage that would get people up there?
Yes, yes.
I think you'll do it on the highway if we talked with Andy O'Te or something.
I doubt ADOT would want that. We've had, we used to have entrances like on Spring Canyon and some of the other ones on, off the highway, and they blocked those all off.
Is there a parking, like, I don't think very many people use that parking lot on offer drive either, the one where the old opera house used to be.
Yeah, we, we do have that one and that one, um.
But I don't know, unless you, I mean, if you live here, you'd know about it, but.
Yeah.
Can we really, can we identify actually how many of these small lots we have around town that we could actually convert to parking?
Yeah, I mean, we, a lot of them are, are being used as parking. Just not, I mean, and we have some parking signs, like directional to point people where parking is. And we need to get more. We have them like in, in stock, but we just need to get them put out. And we're wanting to do that to help people get up to like the Soul, the Souls Parking Lot. Get up to Walsh Parking Lot, up to, you know, further up by the courthouse or whatever. And then those signs can also get them up to the Higgins Hill Parking Lot and stuff, so.
I think if the lots are actually, I, I don't know what they look like, but.
They're all branded.
They're graded to look like parking areas and not grassy areas.
Most of them are. The only one that's not, that hardly anybody really knows about is the Higgins Hill. It's a, and it, you could probably, I don't know how many parking spots, probably close fifty parking spots up there.
Yeah, just without taking out that big section.
Yeah, there's a lot of rock in there, so it needs to be like graded out and smoothed out, but.
Careful, the two-wheel drive vehicle, it's heavy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that it's not actually a real parking lot yet, but it's, it can be.
And, yeah, it's our property and it's just open property that, somebody, I don't know when it was, it's been there since I've started with the city. Where there's a bunch of rock there spread out, but it's just, needs to be spread out better. We could put bumper blocks there and add fifty parking spots right there.
Can I clarify? Is that the area between the pickleball court and the highway?
Uh, no.
Well, behind the pool.
No, that's.
It's behind, it's behind it.
It's from the, the pool to Higgins Hill.
Yeah.
Behind the pool.
If you go up.
So west of the pool.
Oh, okay, behind the pool. But you're standing at the kiddie pool, you're looking at it.
So you would access it.
From Higgins Hill, from Higgins Hill.
Wow, that's a lot to ask with the residences there.
So what you need to do is link these available spots, Nick takes no outlay of any kind of capital. We could link it together with that shuttle, with that trolley. Is there ARPA funds or anything that can?
There, there, there are ARPA funds for the right, you know, with the right combination. People saying yes. So that it could be a council.
That's something that if you guys wanted, you could recommend to the council.
Yeah, that, that would, that would actually be a good recommendation.
You want to.
We could exploit what we already have. And if we, if we linked it and made a communicative all around and the tourists could get on there and ride around, they would love that.
I do think.
So I think it's one of the best options. I mean, that could be something that would, people would want to come to. Especially like the one that Doug had found, it would not, looked pretty neat too.
We used to have one, where did that, where did this one go?
Or something.
Yeah, the owner of it lives in Tombstone, it's over there at Tombstone.
Oh, is that the one that Dick, whatever?
It used to be here.
Yeah, I've seen that one.
Well, he lives in Tombstone.
So it was at a private company is what you're saying? It wasn't a.
It was a private resident, yeah.
Uh-huh.
I don't know. I remember when I first started coming here, I've seen it, but it was long.
And you could make it a club car.
Yeah, there you go, that's, yeah, that's.
I, I have to.
He works at the mine, ladies and gentlemen.
I am probably the only one in this room that doesn't buy the trolley. Because I don't want to see Bisbee look like Tombstone. That's obvious.
So there's a point, you could have shootouts, but they'd be real in Bisbee.
Shootout at Warren Ballpark.
Yeah, that's right.
I think we should pursue that idea though of also monetizing a couple of the lots. Like I think Central School might go for at least on one road and they could put up signs or a chain when, when they're having, or something. They could not change it something that when they're having events, you can't use it.
We have another meeting in what, a week? Maybe we could put together a list of items. I don't know if, if, if Nana can get it on that agenda. But if we could put together a list of items that we discussed here and you folks could, could make a, you know, we'll put it in a motion form. And if you made a motion to bring it before council, it would be, I think, this, this is the mellowest. The, you know, the, what you folks have been talking about tonight is the nicest parking debate I've heard. So maybe that would be a happy thing to put before council.
That would be good. I think I would like Matt to follow through in terms of just some basic engineering in terms of how we could develop those lots we talked about. And, and also I think we need a plan in terms of signage. I mean, that's something that you probably brought it up, but anyway. something that you probably brought it up, but anyway, we need some better signage.
For parking.
How do, right, how do, how do, give it those parking areas? And I always thought if we're gonna redo, uh, the entrance off of eighty, we need to call it a gateway.
Yeah.
And we designed it as a gateway.
Right.
And so you're welcoming people, which would slow down traffic, clarify how you move around the, the city. Uh, but I, I think that there's a real opportunity there of, uh, I mean, I think even somebody designed, a pageant designed, uh, an arch could be there, you know, in terms of.
Could be.
A welcome to the Bisbee gateway. But anyway, that would certainly slow people down and, and facilitate that, so.
Um, and I do think that you have the, the ability, and this is all being recorded, so we'll remember, but you also have the ability to request a zoning enforcement part-time person or something, and that would help you, I think, to, if, if, if that person's coming out of your department, or we could have somebody, well, Joe's in your department too, so.
Well, yeah, right now.
I forgot about that.
Technical.
I thought he was in my department, Biden.
He will be, that's why.
I just want to offer my personal opinion about the enforcement. No one likes enforcement. I, I understand, I don't like enforcement. But the enforcement, or the lack of enforcement that hasn't been happening for a period of time, in other departments other than parking, and I'll just take another one, sewer, sewer and water. Because of the lack of enforcement, we have people that owe like thirty, forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars with multiple properties. So I am not saying that I'm an advocate, like, I'm not, you know, I'm not the Nazi police either, but I'm just saying, years and years and years of not addressing this situation has put us exactly where we are in other things. So if we're just taking sewer and water, for example, now we're paying, all the residents are paying, you know, seventy-five dollars for someone else's lack of enforcement. So that's my only, I'm not talking just about parking, I'm talking about the other things that people didn't do or didn't enforce for so long, and we're the generation that inherited the problem and we're making the hard decisions and, um, you know, making the hard choices because other people didn't, or, um, it was pushed aside, or there was no enforcement, and now we have a bigger situation, and now we have the tourism really coming into town. You know, it's there, so we have to make the hard decisions one way or the other, and whatever the enforcement is, we can start off here and go, you know, full rogue on something, but it has to start somewhere, and no one wants to make that popular unpopular stance.
Well, we can call it compliance rather than enforcement, it's sort of a nicer.
Let me add a lot of that to Nancy, that is, she just gave one example, but another example that I'm becoming fully aware of is the Airbnbs.
Right.
There are supposedly close to four hundred Airbnbs here in Bisbee. There's less than twenty that have a TPT license and pay room tax.
And they're working on that, it's.
I, I'm aware of that.
Yeah.
But I just, um, city council's gotta stand up, you are a city council, they, they gotta stand up and take a stand on this, because they're the ones that say.
But I could, but just on that, I can tell you that a lot of people, when they pay their taxes through Airbnb, they didn't know that it doesn't come back to Bisbee, just like we didn't know that the money from a ticket doesn't come back to Bisbee either. So anybody that has an Airbnb that was just avoiding, uh, the, you know, the paying or the getting the tax, there's people that did that, but then there are other people that made the honest, uh, mistake or lack of knowledge that when they pay their taxes through Airbnb, that none of that money, that goes to the state. It doesn't go to the city of Bisbee.
Yeah.
It goes to the coffe for the state.
Yeah, I mean, we, I mean, finances, definitely working on the Airbnbs, um, they're doing, I mean, as much as they can, um, with the, and city council, I know I've heard, and you've probably heard them talk about Airbnb, Airbnbs a lot. We have, we've had meetings and heard that, and they're wanting to, and, and they're working with our attorney to try and figure out what, what they can do with that.
They're protected by the state.
Yeah, they're protected by the state, but compliance, there's another, you know, it, there should be, and distribution of the fees and taxes and things that are taken. If you look at the, uh, I don't have any information before me, but if you look at the, the pie chart for where our, our property taxes go, it's not that much to us. I mean, it's, it's a good chunk, but it, it, you would think property taxes would go to the city and, and a little bit would go to the county, but it's sort of the opposite of that.
Yeah. Um, and then with the sewer and garbage, um, the finance department has, gives public work, so let's, hey, these are the people that, you know, haven't been paying for a certain amount of time. And we are, uh, trying to, our, we have three guys in our collections department that are trying to go out and install shut-off valves on those places, those homes.
Right.
Um, and then when we are done, we let finance know, hey, we're done, they give them a forty-five day, uh, shut-off notice, and if they don't come in and pay and, or set up something within forty-five days, uh, and they get a notice from Arizona Waters also. And we come together and, and we shut off the sewer, they shut off the water.
Right, but, but when we're selling a property, I'm just speaking as a real estate agent, um, when we do, um, we don't know, so if I'm working with a client, I don't know that there's a sewer lien on that property, well into my client has invested already time and money into the transaction, because other liens show up.
Yeah.
And it's not until a different part of the process that we know about this lien.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying, you know, when we're talking about enforcement, whether it's with parking or, um, whatever, if we get these city dollars through certain means, that maybe we can then have our own judge. You know what I mean? So these dollars are, are helping us to get other things. I mean, we didn't, none of us knew, I don't know, knew, but I didn't know we had a judge. I didn't know why we weren't getting dollars. But, but what is, how does the city of Bisbee get the dollars so that the dollars, not that we don't like county, we love county, but how do we get our own dollars so we can correct our own problems?
So, and that was, that was discussed, thank you, that was discussed at a council meeting, I don't know exactly, or maybe it was during our budget meeting, I can't remember. Um, and they discussed, um, with the attorney, how do we look at getting our own magistrate? I think that's what it's called.
That's one of the things.
Magistrate.
Yeah.
Slash judge, whatever it is. So where we can, you know, get those funds back. So it, it has come up and they're talking about it.
Right.
So.
Because, you know, we're talking about parking now, but, you know, I'm gonna just move forward just a little bit and talk about another little scary issue that's gonna come up, and it's gonna come up in front of planning and zoning. There's a very unpopular, um, sale about to go through from the county to an individual on a, on the old high school.
Right.
And you can read about two hundred and sixty-one comments about the opinions of all of the busy residents on that particular transaction.
Or just go for a cup of coffee and you'll hear about it.
Right, where's the parking for, where's the parking for that? Where's the parking for that?
There's, there's fifty dedicated parking spots there.
Yeah.
That's what they're working off of.
That parking lot that's at the old, old high school is county, it's not the city, it's not city property.
Right, so for, you know, so an average house goes for about four hundred thousand dollars in Bisbee now, an entire fifty parking spots and a zillion square footage, like for nine hundred thousand.
Forty-five thousand square feet, yeah.
Right, so I'm just saying, whatever's, whatever's happening, that building was not, it was a county building, so the county could do whatever they wanted, but who's going to pay the price? All of the old, the nineteen hundred residents of Old Bisbee that don't want change.
I understand that.
Yep.
City council shouldn't have changed it from R O one to C, CM one. That changed before this body, so we had our say on that. We, we voted it down. Huh? You voted it down? Well, you go to the fore.
I thought that was a tie, that was the tie.
That was the tie.
Tie, a tie acts as a negative vote.
Right.
Yeah, I forgot about that, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think that certainly, uh, again, a related issue for parking, um, is this, and that is residential development in our downtown area. Right now, we have a moratorium on, um, commercial development in terms of parking, no longer required to provide park.
Right.
I have a real concern in terms of if we move this into turning the upper stories in our downtown area in the condominiums, similar to what's going on in the school. Trouble with residential is, they're there day and night, and they got more than one vehicle. Tourist comes into town, they got one vehicle, it's there for a period of hours and then it moves on. Uh, and I think certainly, that's certainly something this body needs to be thinking about, as to whether or not we're gonna encourage residential development in our downtown area because of the increasing parking demands. But anyway, that's a concern I've always had.
Yeah, and I think it's valid.
You know, the, the, I, I've been saying this for, since I decided to come on planning and zoning, so for at least almost four years, as, um, uh, who was in charge of tourism, she did her job almost too well.
Yeah.
And so we loved her in doing her position, but the train left the station, we're not going back.
No.
You know, and if you take, um, the twenty-five-year plan that I saw for, you know, the, the northern part of Arizona, like Jerome, which is smaller than Bisbee, um, they knew it was coming, they get two, they got three point one million visitors and we were getting one point eight. Now, I haven't seen what the statistics are now, but there's, we're not gonna just go down, we're gonna keep on going because someone was really, really good at their job and we did not make certain accommodations fast enough along the way, we just don't have things in place. And I understand that it's not popular, but we, we're not going back. It's, it's not slowing down, it's speeding up and it's getting worse and worse and worse and worse and worse. So at some point, you know, even if we all decided not to re-up for planning and zoning, we'd be leaving it to the next body, um, that wasn't dealing with tourism at one point eight million people. Now they're, they're, you know, doing what Central Arizona does, and that's three point one million people. We have to get a handle on it and make hard decisions that are not gonna be popular, for sure.
Also, we operate under the misconception of what used to be true, that we're a weekend town, but that is no longer the case. If you look at business on Main Street, uh, I mean, yes, it's stronger during the weekend, but there's strong visitation throughout the week.
I know, I know people are watching that because it could be COVID that was the staycation kind of, you know, attraction for people. But you're right, it is, it, it has been, you look at these last four months, they've been full, oh, yeah, every single day.
But people can work from home now because of COVID, we're not going back. We, we get a lot of retirees that don't have to come in on the weekends.
Right.
And I'm just saying, another thing that happened to me because of the garbage and the trash, I was actually walking my garbage to my trash can at the bottom, bottom of the steps and.
And it was full.
Well, not yet, and not only was it full, but then a girl was tearing up to go to, I live on Clausen, and the girl was tearing up to go to a meeting, and she almost plowed me over, and she said, like, I, I looked at her and stopped in the middle of the street, and she said, I'm not an Airbnb guest, I actually have a job. So I'm carrying my, my trash on a Monday to the overflowing garbage can, and someone almost plows me over because she assumes that I'm an Airbnb guest. So it wasn't a weekend. So whatever we're doing, it's not, it's not going backwards, is what I'm saying.
Point of information, so when these Airbnb people pay this money to Airbnb or River Bow, when they pay this money, it doesn't come to Bisbee.
Correct.
It goes to the state.
Correct.
I, I.
The owner's paying it, they think it's going into the city of county.
Correct, so, so what happens is the, um, it's divvied up by county, so let's just say it's a ten million dollar pot, and Phoenix has seven zillion Airbnbs. Maricopa County's gonna get the bulk of that money that's collected by Airbnb. Cochise County might get three dollars and fifteen cents of the money, you know what I'm saying? It's by county because it goes into the, it goes into.
But they could and arguably should be paying our bed tax.
That's what I guess.
And that would come.
Yes, yes.
Correct.
But also, if Cochise.
But we can't enforce that because the state has a lock on that somehow?
No, we, we are, uh, as soon as finance department can locate and find, uh, a home that is an Airbnb, used as an Airbnb, and they try and do that, uh, by different ways of being, you know.
Well, like go on Airbnb.
John Sky's got three of them.
So they're looking at that. So.
There's Michael Schmidt and John Sky.
I'm sorry, Doug, you were gonna say something?
Oh, I'm, I, I, let's see, I think it's, they made, they, yeah.
But don't they get, when they get a, a number from the city, isn't that where they pay the head tax to the city?
Well, that's, that is actually what I was gonna talk about, is that if it goes to Cochise County, I believe that it's sent up to the county to distribute it, and I don't think it goes by, so Bisbee probably, you know, Wilcox, which, you know, is popular but doesn't have probably anything near what we have as far as Airbnbs, I don't know how they divide between Bisbee and Wilcox, or Bisbee and Elgin, you know, that, I don't know how that gets divided.
That it's probably not proportional to the amount of Airbnbs in that city.
That's probably right, I don't know, but it may, you know, I don't wanna spread false talk, but I, it may not be equitable.
But if it was our bed tax, again, that would go to us.
Yes.
Completely.
It, well, yeah, and some of it would go probably to the county.
So, so let's get back to a parking lot, so just, uh, the big parking lot, the biggest one in town that would be ideal, is the one that's privately owned and they want a lot of money for it. Has the city ever tried to negotiate that?
I don't know of that, I, I think it would have been a smart thing to do years ago, but I, I haven't heard about that at all.
Well, and they're charging for parking, the city charged for parking.
That would be a good revenue stream.
How about eminent domain?
Okay, you're in trouble now. You wanna say your name?
Doug.
Oh, my God.
The one thing that I've talked to people about too, whenever I run into people, I ask them about parking, and some are, they're frustrated, but they say, you know, it's only the weekends, so they're here for the weekends and then they're gone. I don't wanna do, I don't wanna put in parking meters, I don't wanna do anything that's going to affect us seven days a week, when all, when the biggest problems we get.
Yeah.
I've also talked to people and asked about local parking permits, which also did not get, uh, was not accepted.
That, that is the, that is the consensus that I obtained also.
So I think, I think if we had a lot like the big one down there, even if we could put in parking kiosks, um, something.
There are, there are, uh, software and camera things that were looked at, uh, in this, not by these, these, I think one of them had a little inkling of that, but there have become a lot of easier, um, enforcement, you almost don't need, um, the person.
Yeah, the other person, they have that gate and then, yeah, they put their card in it and.
Right, and if they, or even some of them don't need a gate.
Yeah.
They have cameras that take the license plate and charge it, like, you know, when you drive on the East Coast, they have those, those tolls, and if you don't have that little box, it just takes your license plate and you, you eventually receive a note saying.
Six months later, you get that.
Yeah, yeah, two dollars and twenty-five cents.
In a big lot like that, it would be nice to have something, but like in the Bisbee parking lot, I mean, I park in there a lot, and I would hate to see locals have to pay to park in lots like that, when we shop locally.
Yeah, yeah, and that is, that is a generator for retail on that street, is that. Yeah, yeah, and that is, that is a generator for retail on that street, is that you can get there, and that's really important. That street used to be double parallel parked years ago, and it wasn't any wider than it is now.
And it was USAID.
Yeah, that's, you're right, that was USAID. Yeah, that's, so, you know, people live differently, it's kind of, you know, they, they put up with more than I think someone puts up with now.
You talking about on Main Street?
Yeah, right in front of the shops on Main Street.
Well, I mean, I seen years ago when they used to park on both sides, but there wasn't sidewalks then.
Oh, really, is that, wow.
It's the pictures I've seen in Old Town, like when there was the old vehicles, I don't know how old you're talking, but...
I'm thinking fifties, nineteen fifties.
Well, I don't know, but I know at one point, like there wasn't sidewalks and that's how they were able to park on there.
That's interesting.
Um, but...
Yes.
What I was gonna say is if you put in meter meters, wouldn't you use, couldn't you use that with the sticker system so that a local person wouldn't have to pay?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I know they have an accommodation for, for, and also, you know, we, we had talked about, if you just put signage up and have a box to put money in or a little kiosk to run a card in, if you only get fifty percent compliance, you're still doing way better than you're doing now.
Yeah, that's what, like, at the airport, it has, it's not up yet, but we have a, like, little lockbox that we'll be putting up at the airport for people that come in on the weekends. It's not having anybody out there, you know, patrolling and make sure somebody pays their three dollars for the weekend or whatever. But it's, hey, you know, if you stayed for the weekend, please put your, put money in this or whatever it's gonna say, but, and they'll be kind of an honor system. I mean, whatever, we're not getting anything now, so if we get more, some, hey, we're, we're better off.
I'll just throw this out. If we ask people on the street if they, if you had a choice to pay taxes or not, what do you think most people would say? Right, so, I mean, I think there's gotta be a way for everybody to figure out some kind of permit possibly, or just a way to recognize, I mean, sticker, that, that, you go to a state park in Alaska or whatnot, and you can have, you can buy a permit, you stick sticker on it, you don't have to pay the fee, just go in and park. I'd say, I could see that easily, just like an old mission sticker on a busy resident or whatnot. And then you could set up those kiosks where, you know, people could pay the, either by time or just to use the parking lot individually, and once you leave, you gotta pay to go back again, but...
I, I don't know a coastal town that doesn't have a beach pass that, that you, you know, it's the same sticker system, but Sandy's right, nobody liked my idea.
I guess another one before, forget it, Matt, and that is with Higgins, which is, again, most people are not aware of it at all. It's a large parking lot.
Correct.
And I get, and, and actually, it's not that far walking. I mean, most, if you're parking at the courthouse, eat our restaurants, you're all, you're only a couple of blocks from there.
On the right, right above the commercial center.
Right.
For High Desert is, and so that would probably enhance there.
But I was wondering, I've never done this, but anyway, whether there would be an access through, well, I guess the county attorney's office is in the old nunnery here now. But where, where there would be a designated stairway or walkway from Higgins, once you're parked, it'll go right down through, uh...
Isn't there a stair from Quality Hill down to Main Street?
Yeah, but that's, that's almost to the, the front of the park, that's like on the other side of the pool.
Oh, okay, yeah, you're right, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, it's a walking path.
But once you're parking, whether you could drop, then walk, rather than going back out to Higgins and then down, where you could drop right through the county's property there where the attorney's office, the old nunnery was.
Yeah.
Uh, and that would, you know, would, at first it seemed like it's distant, but it's not, it's very close. And if people, and if it was signage then, that would rep people there, then that would be a...
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could always add a, I mean, stairway, you just gotta build it.
Well, again, I, I've never done that, it's gonna be interesting, but I thought about that now. And I'll go up there tomorrow and look at it myself.
And that's what I was trying to, you know, figure out, I mean, the only way, right now, that people, if they park up there, would have to walk down Higgins Hill and then walk down the road.
Yeah, or another way around the pole.
Oh, yeah, go around the pole, yeah, that's another way.
But it seems to be the long way unless you know where you're heading.
Yeah.
Or you could make a tourist attraction out of, out of a funicular, you know what that is? Goes up the hillside, people will come here just to ride.
Or people don't, people...
And what are they gonna charge? Fourteen dollars.
I mean, ARBA, ARBA will pay for that.
You can also, I mean, if people aren't wanting to go to where, where the High Desert is, they can go through the park and take the stairway down by the, by the Castle Rock. You go down that way.
Signage would help out a lot, I mean, just direct people to parking lots and trails and helping them find the slots, park.
And the tourist guide could give them maps.
Yep.
Well, I was thinking, you know, at our, some of our different parking lots that we have, especially if we get the ones right by the highway, we could have a billboard with map of Bisbee and have the, a name of different, the different parking lots. And so they could see, and then, oh, hey, this is full, I'll go up to, I'll go up to Higgins parking lot.
I'll add on, you could even do a sign color, so Higgins parking orange, and then you have orange arrow.
Yeah.
For people there, or then you have Walsh and you have a purple or this way.
And then it would be nice to be on the Discover Bisbee website.
Yeah.
And, yeah, yeah, you could, there's all kinds of things, we could come up, we could have a pamphlet map of the parking lots, all kinds of stuff.
And while we're spitballing, I kinda think that the idea of these, you know, the big city parking kiosks, I think you called them, are kind of out of place in Old Bisbee.
Yeah.
And maybe if we started with a little, kinda, not a little, but maybe like a donation box explaining our parking situation to tourists and say, we're not charging for parking, but we're trying to finance our parking. So if you see free parking as a value, give us a couple bucks and maybe next time you come here, there'll be more parking.
I think that's a big idea.
With other information.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing at the airport.
It's more of a, it's a bit of a busy, for sure.
Yeah, that's a kind of a, nice way to do it.
The kiosk probably would have to be...
And a unique way to do it, as with the colored parking things rather than just the blue public parking, which I imagine is the sun, that you have a stockpile of the blue public parking, kinda like the hospital sun. Is it not something like that?
Well, parking, parking meters and kiosks are real historic.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, historically, I'm pretty sure we used to have meters before.
Yeah, and in the library, I think there's some of the old pictures in there and there's some of the later years, whatnot.
But they don't use meters anymore, you know, I mean, how they use the kiosks and each one of the busy meters.
You know, like, I was, uh, Monday, Tuesday, I had a conference down in downtown Phoenix, and they have, they have the, um, the meters all along, all along the roads.
And they're crazy expensive too.
They're still using meters down there, but that's along the road, it's not in the parking lot.
Some of those meters do cards now too.
I guess, I guess, Phoenix historically had meters and kept the meters. So rather than install kiosks, they're gonna use the meters that they would have, we'd have to install meters. We'd probably find it more economic to do kiosks.
Yeah, the, the meter that you stick your card in is four thousand dollars. So it's, it can't be on every, you know, I, I think the kiosks work better because the ten parking spots are all the parking spots.
And you couldn't put meters in Bisbee and maintain the same parking spaces.
Then they'd be way out in the area.
What I always find amusing in terms of my own personal parking is everybody, everybody loves Bisbee. Which is bad, suicidal to get in there and get out. And it's surprising in terms of in front of our shop, if I time myself, because I'm down there, you know, unloading and replacing, I never have a problem finding a parking space. People do not like parallel parking, like today, are not able to do it. Uh, and, and of course, people, increasing number of people have big trucks, which is even harder to park in terms of, you know, parking. I have one, but anyway, that, it, it's just interesting. And likewise, I've always, you know, local residents always park out on the highway in terms of special events. And we used to always, we're assured of a parking spot up, up the old high school. If you wanted to walk down, there's always spaces up there.
Well, no, that's gonna be part of...
And that's gonna be changed.
Yeah. And the churches have parking lots that, that, I don't even know if they allow people to use them up there, but there's, during the week, there's probably spots up there.
I have a question about our bus, the Bisbee bus. Is there, I don't know the rules that it operates under. Is there any way that that can be increased during weekends or during events?
And that's a money loss, is my understanding, not a gain.
Yeah.
So it's not like it would be, I think if you added to it, it's like adding to a negative. It, it is a great service for people coming from Douglas and going, where does it go from here?
Our bus?
Yeah.
No, it doesn't go to Sierra Vista, it just stays in Bisbee, from Old Bisbee to Knocko.
Oh, to Knocko.
And it has stops all over.
Oh, wait, isn't there another one?
Huh?
Isn't there another one that comes from Douglas?
There is Cochise Connection that goes from Douglas here to Sierra Vista. Um, but our bus, because we are funded from, through ADOT, we have to follow strict guidelines on how we use the bus. So I'd have to, we'd have to get permission and, cause how we portray, cause right now we have a, a fixed route and that's what we have tell ADOT, and that's how we get our grants, is, hey, we have a fixed route, this is what we do, and, and that's how we specify ourselves. So if we change it, we'll have to change how we get our grants and stuff, and if that helps or hinders, I don't know.
Right.
Does it stop at the pit?
No. I mean, I can see that, wouldn't be a hard stop.
The, you know, you could, you could rent a school bus for the weekend and have it just make a circuit in all these parking lots that we're gonna develop.
Well, then you have to have a...
Have a trolley that just goes and it picks up tourists and has a big sign, says tourist bus.
Well, Higgins, Higgins parking lot, I, I think would be really difficult to get a bus up there.
A trolley, you could.
Yeah, that's why we're looking for that too.
Um, on Bisbee, a school bus, you have to have a CDL for, with a pass for endorsement on top of that.
So I was the president of Bisbee Pride for the twenty eighteen, and that's what we did. We rented a van from Enterprise in Sierra Vista, and we had one of our members, because we wanted to use the Bisbee Tour Company. And the Bisbee Tour Company's golf carts can't go on the highway, they're not allowed to. So what we did was we asked St. Pat's if we could have that be our handicapped accessible lot that was designated as a handicapped, because remember, we tripled the town during, well, we did, during Pride. So St. Pat's was the designated handicapped accessible parking lot. And then we went to the pit, and we had one guy who put out a tip jar and we made a killing going from the pit through to, we dropped them off at the Bisbee Tour Company and then people could walk and go to the events, but then it would go back up to St. Pat's, turn around, pick up people that couldn't, if they were in a wheelchair, they couldn't get into the, the golf carts. So they would drop them off, but that, we had, of all the people, we had maybe ten people that needed to be dropped off in the center of town. Cause remember, if you're handicapped, you can't get on, most likely, you can't get on a golf cart either. So, but we made a killing, a killing down there. And it was just, and I literally rented it, added the driver to my insurance policy, I rented it personally, and it was a van from Enterprise. And I think the van was like, I don't know, two hundred and fifty bucks, so we get a major killing.
I think residents would probably, if there was a vehicle that you're, a place you could park easily and get a shuttle so you can go walk, I'd take my life and son on that in opposed to spending the twenty minutes, you know, in the weekend trying to find someplace to park.
Right.
Well, can Judy and Doug, are you willing to write this up, what we...
Yeah, we'll, we'll work off of this.
And, and then at some point, we'll take some official action, but I think there's a number of good ideas that you're saying that the low food here, the low hanging fruit is, is good, there's a number. And I really appreciate Logan and, and Matt being here to, because I think a number of these are public works projects.
They are.
And I think that certainly, you know, we need to be very supportive of the upcoming December vote on renewing the one percent sales tax, which has just done wonders for this town in terms of paving of streets, and we can move in projects like this next that can, you know...
Can the chief come to talk about enforcement?
You know, I've already been through that, I guess, I mean, I, I mean, I understand, you know...
We're all glad he's retiring.
Well, but we just don't have the personnel. Uh, and, and there was nothing more controversial than when we, there's brief times when we started issuing tickets to people and, and, and there's, there are very strong historic feelings there. I mean, certainly the whole way that the paid parking lot was handled, people are still mad about that. Uh, you know, any idea, you know, any proposal in terms of the use of that or anything else, you know, you're gonna get a reaction from those people. But anyway, that's Bisbee, and I think we've identified some more neutral things here that will be more compatible. So I appreciate this work session that...
Yes, thank you very much.
Judy, thank you for coming back. And we are adjourned then.
Can I ask you guys a question about the term...